Way off today, guys. We'll start this again, thank you. Good evening. We'll call to order tonight the Planning Commission regular meeting for Tuesday, September the 13th, at 6 o'clock PM. Can I have a roll call vote, or roll call attendance, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Bedoya?
Here.
Vice Chair Colindres?
Here.
And Chairman Smith?
Here. If you'll please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
No adjustments.
Any conflicts of interest to disclose tonight? No? All right, for public comment, period. This meeting will be open to the public and conducted in a virtual format to be inclusive of all participation preferences. Public comment participation is encouraged by emailing any comments to the City Clerk's office or by calling in using the phone number provided on the front of the agenda. Do we have any public comments for, or items tonight? Items not on the agenda tonight?
I don't have any for any items not on the agenda. Rudy, I know you have a caller. Is he for an item or for an item not on the agenda?
An item not on the agenda. We have one caller on the line.
I'm sorry. Can you say it again? On the agenda or for an item not on the agenda?
For an item not on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Do you want to go ahead and take that call?
They'll take their call.
Okay, go ahead and patch him through. Caller, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Go right ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the last few years, I've made requests for the city to establish a minimum 7,500 square foot lot size for all city single-family residents, or what they call SFARS. In addition, I'm asking that for these lots, a minimum side setback of 10 feet on both sides of the dwelling unit is established for all Beaumont residents of this size, regardless of its number of stories. This zoning, for example, applies to the SFR 165. These minimum standards are important for a number of reasons. Okay, first, the minimum 7,500 square foot lot allows enough room for the side setbacks. They improve a property's aesthetics and by extension its property values. An owner has sufficient square footage to utilize a site for gardening, landscape, and privacy retreats. Number two, 10-foot side setbacks allows for safe access to the rear lot from the street for numerous activities such as small vehicle access, contractor vehicles, and equipment for backyard improvements such as pools, fetos, and entertainment areas. Three, 10-foot side setbacks creates a significant privacy buffer between adjacent residences, which can contribute to any privacy design features incorporated in the residential side profile building designs. People crave privacy, and 10-foot side setbacks allow for more privacy between homes. I've seen the unfortunate consequences of housing tracts where the city allows a developer to build on small lot sizes. Near my home in Fairway Canyon, new housing off Cuckwood Canyon Parkway, south of Champions Boulevard, was approved by the city with housing lot sizes falling below 5,000 square feet. Consequently, the finished homes are too close together, which has negatively affected the Oak Valley specific plans, view shed, aesthetics, and property values. Please don't repeat the mistake made in the latest phases in Fairway Canyon. Also, Beaumont zoning code is confusing. 17.03.060 Residential Single Family Zone and 17.03.065 Residential Traditional Neighborhood seem to be making arbitrary distinctions which are not necessary for the same type of housing. Beaumont's housing stock is comprised of non-track houses found primarily in the city's historic core and the housing tract, of which are many, are specific plans that are built mostly by out-of-town developers. These distinctions do not matter. Please enact a zoning code that establishes the minimum lot sizes and setbacks for all SFRs I suggested. Please note my request does not apply to rural residential or rural agricultural zoning, and I'm not opposed to multiple family zoning if it's properly placed, such as where it's been suggested for Beaumont's downtown revitalization project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Rudy, do we have any other callers on the line?
We have no callers on the line.
No other comments.
So with that, we'll move to action items. Number one, approval of the minutes. Are there any comments on the minutes? Now, entertain a motion.
I'll second.
I'll say.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedoya?
Yes.
Vice Chair Colindres?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. Item number two, tentative tract map number 32850, modification to conditions TM 2022-0009. We have a staff report.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Carol Kendrick Clanningstaff presenting TM 2022-0009, which is a modification of conditions of approval to tentative tract map 32850. Staff did receive the application on August 17th of this year. We did place a public notice on the press enterprise and notified property owners within a 300-foot radius of this public hearing. Only one comment was received to date, and that was included in your staff report, which expressed concerns regarding the life of the map, the will-served letter, and the two-story products. So I want to provide a brief history on the project before getting into the applicant's request. Tentative tract map 32850 was originally approved by the city council on July 19th, 2005, which at the time proposed 108 residential lots on 29.32 acres. Project was modified a few months later to reduce the number of lots to 103 due to an existing gas line and easement on the southern edge of the property. The project in its current form is proposing 95 single-family lots with a .077 acre lot for drainage and a 1.59 acre park site. On April 17th, 2007, the city council considered a request to modify the conditions of approval regarding condition number 5.13, to remove the single-story restriction on 45 lots, which was plotted in the staff report and is attached to your staff report as attachment G. The council did approve this modification but added a condition that required architectural plans to return to council for review and approval. As for the life of the map, the initial life of the map was set at two years, and it received three one-year extensions, which set the expiration date to July 19th, 2010. The map also received seven years of automatic extensions under several California bills that extend the life of the map to July 19th, 2017. A final map application was submitted to the city on April 17th of 2017. However, the map was not recorded due to outstanding items, including the failure to meet the existing conditions of approval. Then on October, sorry, November 17th, 2020, the city and the applicant entered into a settlement agreement to allow an additional 60 days to record the map. That settlement agreement did provide two additional 60-day extensions, which were granted to the applicant. And then in February of this year, the city entered into a Second Amendment to the settlement agreement, which allows the applicant until March 12th of 2023 to record their map. In order to advance the map towards recordation, the applicant is requesting modifications to the condition of approval number 3.17 to require park plans to be approved prior to the issuance of the first building permit instead of the recordation of the final map. To delete the last sentence from condition number 3.16 that reads, "The minimum usable pad depth shall be 90 feet." Also, the deletion of item D from condition of approval 4.1 that requires all building pads to have a minimum depth of 90 feet and a pad width of 70 feet, exclusive of any slopes in excess of two feet in vertical height. The applicant is also requesting that condition 5.13 be removed in its entirety, which is related to the one-story restriction. I'd like to point out that staff did modify this condition for this staff report to include the language requiring council approval for the architecture. Therefore, if the commission concurs with the applicant, a new condition will need to be added to comply with the council direction from 2007, or it will need to be modified. For SEQA, an initial study and negative declaration were prepared in 2004 and adopted by the city council in 2005. The proposed modifications will not impact the previous analysis. So at this time, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing and for a recommendation to the city council to either approve the modifications to the conditions of approval, further modify the conditions of approval, or deny the modifications to the conditions of approval for tentative tract map 32850. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And we also have the applicant here as well.
Thank you. So the action tonight is a recommendation of city council of whatever form?
That is correct.
Okay. Questions for staff? Commissioner Colindres?
Not at this time.
Mr. Stevens?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Bedoya?
No.
So the map extensions seem a little unusual. But, you know, as far as we know, there is settlement agreements, so it is legal and lawful that the map has until that date to record with the conditions as they were approved and as they exist today.
Yes, that's my understanding. Staff and the city have been working with the city attorney's office to craft those settlement agreements. And I believe that this second settlement agreement is the final extension for this map.
Okay. Sounds like you got another flash flood warning. Oh, no, that's fine. They've been happening now for the last, what, 10 days, so? Okay. And then, you know, the revised conditions of approval that are in the staff report that are redlined in here. On their surface, they seem reasonable. The change in the building pads, you know, that requiring a certain building pad within a lot size is not something I've typically seen on other applications that we've had in the city or conditions I've had in other jurisdictions. So that doesn't seem out of the ordinary to me. Is there any significant heartache that staff has with the ones that at least redlined on here?
Staff has been working with the applicant on trying to resolve some of the issues with the conditions of approval. I can speak to the park condition. It's requiring approved park plans prior to the map recordation, which, you know, which is unusual. Typically, we see them, you know, the first building permit or at some milestone, like halfway through the project. So we've talked with the applicant and said we were comfortable with prior to the issuance of the first building permit. I know that they've been working on different grading solutions for this site, so I'll defer to Public Works on the two conditions regarding the pads.
So Public Works doesn't have any objections to omitting those. There are no municipal codes that would relate to the minimum pad size, particularly in a residential development. And staff was unsuccessful in determining the intent behind those at the time. So all we have now is speculation.
Okay. But the condition for, you know, so the condition for the 7,200 square foot lots remains unchanged. The map has to record with that. It's just there might maybe be a case that there's a house plotting or a small retaining wall or something is necessary, along those lines. Okay. Okay. I don't have any further questions for staff. With that, we will open the public hearing at 6:15. We'll start with the applicant, and then we'll go to public comments. If you would state your name for the record, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jarnay Gardner, and I am here representing the owner, Mosafar Bazzad, who is here with us tonight, as well as our engineers from LEC to answer any questions you may have. I want to thank all staff for their efforts to place us on the agenda for tonight. I believe Ms. Kendrick did a great job in preparing the background for our case. We are asking tonight for your approval of these minor changes out of necessity as they create a hardship on the owner and future buyers of this property. The final map needs to record as quickly as possible as its final expiration date is quickly approaching in March 2023, and time is still needed to resolve these conditions and work through the final mapping process. If you have any other questions, we would be glad to clarify any concerns about the modifications.
Thank you. I think we'll go through the public hearing. If we have some questions at that point, we may ask you to come back up. And do we have any requests to speak on this item?
I don't have any written comments. Judy, or I'm sorry, Rudy, do we have anyone on the line?
We have no one on the line.
Was there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak?
Okay. So are there any questions for the applicant? Not seeing any. So the item here tonight, we have the three items in red. I think of special note is condition 513. Residences within subdivision shall be limited to single-story residences. City council allowed the modification to 45 to contain two-story homes. And then the request was to completely strike that condition?
Correct. So on page 23 of your staff report, I modified the condition to include the city council approval. So we can either further modify that condition, if that's the Planning Commission's direction, or we can strike that condition, and we can add in another condition that requires the architecture to go back to council.
Well, my thought on this is since council decided to add that condition at a hearing, that I'm hesitant to recommend to council one way or the other. I kind of leave it back to them how they would want to proceed with that.
Nathan, I was here at the time that that one story was, I'm sorry. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but we are the property owner behind this property to the west.
And if you state your name, please.
Mary Daniel.
Thank you.
And I was there at the city council when they did the one-story, mainly because of the view shed in that area. Anyone going up 79 can see Mount San Jacinto over there. Big two-story houses like they were building would be sitting right in the middle of that. So the one-story was approved at that time. After that, and I wasn't even aware of it, we were never notified, then the 45 houses were said they could be two-story. At that time, the administration did not think it was important to notify anybody of anything. But anyway, so we were okay with that. Well, now they want them all two-story? The whole idea, I mean, and believe me, there was a huge discussion about this, was that that view was important for anybody coming in and leaving Beaumont without those big houses sitting there. So just to let you know that that's the background of that.
Thank you. So the conditions, as they're written today, does allow for 45 two-story homes to exist within the project?
That's correct.
I do appreciate that background, thank you. But, you know, in this case, I do hate to kind of step on council's toes since they added that condition. You know, I kind of feel it's appropriate for that to go back to them for decision-making. That's just my take on it. I don't know how the other commissioners feel on that particular item. But I do, you know, for the items that were otherwise highlighted, they both seem reasonable.
Can I speak on that particular item?
Sure, please.
I read Ms. Daniels' concern and her letter to the city. And we did a cross-section of our grading plan against her property. And I have an exhibit here if you'd like to see it. But basically, we've lowered our pads so that they're actually lower than what was originally approved. And so there's probably about a 12-foot difference in height between our pad and her ground elevation. And then when you add a six-foot perimeter wall on top of that, that helps hide the homes. But what I wanted to point out here is that at her level of equal, she would be barely looking at rooftops of the single-story. So the two-story isn't going to sit higher than a normal single-story if it were on a flat pad.
Okay.
Would you like to see that exhibit?
I would like to see that.
Okay, let's see here. West and east, depth below. There it is. That would be the one, the exhibit on the top that says vacant land. So typically, a single-story probably runs between 20 and 23 feet tall for the rooftop. So she would barely be able to see the rooftop of a single-story. And then if you say a two-story home ranges between maybe 23 or 28 feet, somewhere in that. It doesn't extend beyond what a normal single-story would be. So there would be no obstruction of the view anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any other further questions or discussion in the commission?
That was a concern, but the developer answered it.
Okay. So with that, we'll close the public hearing then at 6:22. And do we have a motion? Or any further discussion, I should say?
Yeah, the gentleman here wanted to speak.
Oh, well.
I spoke to her, but you guys didn't see me, so I... Is it okay if I'm representing the applicant and the civil engineer? I would just like to make one comment.
Up to you.
But you requested the close, so...
Was that? Yeah, I think we go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name's Dan Haskins. I'm with Land Engineering Consultants. And fellow commissioners, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. We understand that the council made this determination a long time ago. One of the elements that we want to request tonight is proposed language that can be taken to them if it has to go to them. The zoning code, if you guys may be aware, and I think Christina and Carol can back me up on this. The current zoning code under the residential single-family zone allows for any building height to be built to 35 feet. That means two-story or single-story. Depending on the builder, they may have a 612 pitch versus a 412 pitch. So there isn't any current restriction in the code that we can find, unless you guys can maybe point it to me, that restricts single-family versus two-story development. It just gives a maximum building height, and then a maximum number of stories of 35 feet. We do understand Ms. Daniels' concern, and we appreciate that. We did an extensive redesign of this subdivision, and the common property line elevation is actually quite larger. It ranges from 13 feet to 28 feet. The pads are now below the common property line. So most of the roofs won't even be seen, even if they're two-story. So we wanted to make that point, that we've really made an effort to be, you know, to meet your guys' concern, so that we can get those homes down. Because as their property is undeveloped currently, and when it does develop, I think they're going to enjoy if they want to sell or ever sell, or if a buyer buys it and they want to develop that view shed that they're going to be able to enjoy over the top to the east, which would, you know, provide an enjoyment of the view of Mount San Jacinto, which she addressed in her letter. So we're concerned about that, and we want to make sure she knows that we are concerned about it. So the other item, what we would like to propose, because, and we weren't back here in '05 with the council. When the council adopted this language for the restrictions of single homes and two-story homes on specific lots, the zoning code at that time didn't even have that language in it. There's no zoning text amendment. So what we're asking the Planning Commission to do is, based on the municipal code, propose the striking of that, but we're happy to replace it with language that the choosing of the homes, because there's no home builder at this current time assigned to this property. The applicant is simply under a time crunch to get the map recorded. We'd like to separate those two items because the city, as you're well aware, is a plot-plan process to identify the placement of homes, which homes, architectural styles, single-story, two-story. The subdivision map is creating the lines on the ground. Now, there are many elements of the code that identify what we're going to do at this point. But the building of homes and the setting of the heights of the stories and everything doesn't typically happen at this juncture. It happens when a plot-plan procedure, application process occurs. So with that in mind, we'd like to make the condition indicate that, you know, the homes and the plotting of homes would be subject to the plot-plan application process, which would be done by a builder, and not have the applicant be forced to make something up, to create a mix when he's not going to be building the homes, if that makes sense. So we would hope that we could change this condition just by striking it, not necessarily just strike it away, but indicate that the elements of what this condition set forth would be carried out through the plot-plan process. And that protects the Daniels, it protects the applicant, and the builder wants to have his ability to make his case through the plot-plan process with planning. So we would recommend that language in lieu of just keeping it and going to the council. Thank you. Go ahead.
So from my understanding of this, then, that the approval of the final map is not contingent upon approval of a plot plan for plotting at this time?
That's correct. So these are two different...
The issues are already separated between the two.
Right.
It really is just more of a question of the validity of having a condition or maintaining a condition that does require a certain percentage of lots, about half of lots, to be single-story.
Correct. And the plotting and the architecture all has to go back to council based on the condition of approval. So, I mean, they'll have the ultimate say on how the plotting gets done, but there's no plotting required for the final map. It's just a restriction that was placed on the map at the time that it was adopted by the city council.
Okay.
So this really does provide, not only the... So this really does provide, not only the Daniels, but the property owners to the north who have existing homes and all adjacent owners, the ability to come back and be a part of that decision that doesn't really, it really can't be made at the Planning Commission or the map recording stage. Once a builder's on board and somebody's purchasing it, that's when all of those engines start, and then they come to you, and they come to council and staff, and all the public gets invited, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to point out that typically minor plot plans, if they do go back to Planning Commission or City Council under a condition of approval, they are not noticed. So that's not something that typically the surrounding property owners would be notified of. That is just a, it's a public, it's just a meeting and not a public hearing such as this one.
So our action still remains tonight as a recommendation to council. So regardless of whether or not we put language in there, revise language, decide to strike language, it still is formed as a recommendation to council. You know, and in that regard, you know, if, if that's the consideration that moves forward with it, you know, as part of the meeting minutes is that Planning Commission's recommendation is to have council reevaluate that, that particular condition that they added in there. It's not, you know, I don't know, approval or denial on our part, you know, for that. But it would still be part of what is considered at that time. Okay. Yeah, I mean, as long as the, if the two processes are unconnected from each other, you know, which they are, if it's not going to impact the recordation of the map, you know, be able to proceed, you know, as a matter of selecting architecture, you know, at a such a time that a builder is able to go in there and construct, construct the plan.
That's correct.
Can I get clarification, just real quick? So the recommendation from...
Jarnay.
Yeah.
Sorry. So the recommendation from Planning Commission is going to be that you would support removing this condition and putting language in there that would say that a plot plan would go back to city council?
That's all, the plot-plan requirement's already there. So that has to go to city council as it is regardless.
Okay, so you can't...
So I think that the recommendation is almost a non-recommendation. It's more of a, you know, council brought this action to us. We're not, we're not going to say yea or nay to it.
Okay.
But allow for council to make the condition for something that they decided to put onto the map. You know, at least this is my take on it. I don't speak for the other commissioners here. I haven't had a chance to hear from them.
Okay. Would you be able to support the change? Make that recommendation that Planning Commission and planning staff would support that change in your staff report?
Well, that's kind of making a recommendation.
Well...
And that's...
Well, that way they know that they have your approval, too.
It's, it's...
Because things have changed, the design elevations changed, that it makes sense to move forward with a recommendation that it be all reheard at that time, but remove this condition of the 50 single-story homes and plotting specifics.
I'll leave that for discussion up here.
Okay, thank you.
For staff, so when we're choosing an architectural, can we add language to hold the public meeting or can we not? Is that available or not?
We can put that recommendation in there, that it be a publicly noticed meeting with notification to the surrounding property owners.
I would like to have that verbiage added on once we are, well, once we're choosing, because right now we're just doing the subdivision, subdivision plan for us to at least notify surrounding owners that we're doing architectural things nearby.
So it'd be the public hearing item or just, because normally it would go as consent, correct?
It, it wouldn't be consent. It would just be like a public meeting and not a public hearing. So we could add language on the end of Condition 513 that says, "At a publicly noticed hearing, including notification of adjacent property owners within a 300-foot radius."
Okay.
And that would make it, that would make it consistent with typical public noticing requirements, a 300-foot radius plus notice in the newspaper, so.
All right.
That's, that's an option.
So commissioners, you know this of me, that I'll, you know, play devil's advocate a little bit here. You know, as the, as the applicant did present, they have made modifications to their grading plan to lower it and to reduce the impact on it. You know, for me, it's more of a principle, kind of a point of view, you know, that since council made it, they should be the ones to kind of hear it a little bit. But I think that they have shown efforts, that they are willing to work with it to try to minimize what those impacts were below existing grade. I don't know if that's part of the consideration is that, you know, whatever plotting is less than what would, what would have been originally approved with that tentative map. I don't know if that creates a headache for, you know, planning a public works staff, but, you know, I don't know if that's consideration for it. You know, it's, like I said, on principle, I'm still agnostic on it, I think, to go to council. It seems that the efforts have been made.
Definitely agree with you on that and, you know, appreciate the comments from the owner and, and here to reduce that level of sight. But I hear what you're saying, too, that perhaps they should at least hear it. I agree with, the effort is, was great, but the council needs to hear it.
Well, I, I'm going to keep a kind of a discussion at this point.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
No, I just want to keep a discussion up here at this point.
And then the additional, so on 5.13, you were saying to add a...
That was proposed, is to add a, a public hearing versus a public meeting requirement. So it would be noticed to adjacent property owners.
Yeah, and we could make it a true public hearing and notice it in the newspaper, or we could just keep it as an action item with council, but still notify the surrounding property owners within the 300-foot radius. And it would be in an action item, but not have to be publicly noticed, since that's technically not a requirement of the minor plot plan in the code. But it would be at commission's discretion on which, you know, what the language would be that we could recommend to the, to the council.
Are you thinking full public hearing or public notice? Because that would capture the homeowners on the south boundary line, and that'd attract the Daniels, but the child help that I think is to the south of it. And I forget what's to the east.
I think public notice would suffice, I believe.
I think just because of the modifications that the builder is making, that we just, we can accept these changes. Because if it's going to be the, the height of the two-story houses is going to be below what the original agreement was, I think that mitigation is good. This, to me, I think should be okay. I think we should accept it, is my opinion.
Okay. Judge Lindris, any thoughts?
I'm okay with forwarding it to the city council so that they could, you know, vote on it.
Okay. So I think for, for record, then, you have a couple of commissioners who are not opposed or denied to it, that it seems that efforts have been made. You have one commissioner that is generally supportive of the idea, but, you know, still leaving it to council. And I think that can be, that fact can probably be noted as part of the staff report is regarding that particular item. If that's the motion that ends up happening. Yeah, we're in for a motion.
Okay. Then I move that we accept the changes that, that are presented to us and recommend that council, when they consider it, they approve it.
There was a discussion about the public notice or...
And include a public notice of that.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept as presented. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And I'll do a roll call if you're ready. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedoya?
Yes.
Vice Chair Colindris?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Well, I, yes.
Staff is, staff is clear...
Hesitantly, yes.
Yeah, staff is clear on enough that we can include in the update to council that the recommendation forwarded is what it is with the addition to the condition and council to have the discussion on the additional component, so we're clear.
Then I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any community development, community development director comments at this time?
Just wanted to invite everyone out tomorrow evening to a downtown business meeting. It will be held at the Craft Lounge. Some of you may remember back in the spring, we had the first downtown business meeting to discuss downtown revitalization and some of the things that were going on there. This is part two of the meeting, we, or part two of that discussion. So at the previous EDC meeting, we talked a lot about the funds that council has allocated for some downtown incentive programs. Staff has proposed some incentive programs sort of in a rough framework and are looking for feedback from downtown businesses on whether or not these are adequate, or if we should tweak them, or what types of other incentives might we be able to provide, or what type of assistance might we be able to provide to businesses to help break down those barriers of entry to doing business here in the city. So we're hoping to have some robust discussion tomorrow evening with business owners. Since a lot of what happens in the city comes to you guys, you're more than welcome to, to join in that discussion. It is hosted by the businesses essentially, but the city staff will be there to help facilitate discussion and to take notes and to hear what everybody, you know, has to say about it. So we're looking forward to, to, it's always a good time, but an interesting discussion as well. So I wanted to make sure you all are aware, and that's tomorrow at 6:00 PM. And then Housing Element is scheduled to go to city council on September 20th, and you guys did hear that at previous meetings, so just updating you on, on where that's at. And I think that's it for me. Carol, do you have anything for commission?
Did we want to let them know that we have actually hired a new assistant planner? It's an internal candidate who's currently on vacation this week. So hopefully at the next meeting, we'll introduce you to our new assistant planner, Katie Jensen, who's been working for the city for several years in customer service. So we think she's going to be a great addition. And then I just wanted to give the commission a heads up for the next meeting. We're, we're looking at potentially having a very heavy agenda, so just wanted to let you guys know. I think potentially we're looking at maybe seven items. So just wanted to give everyone a heads up.
What's the status of the open position for Planning Commission?
I can speak to that. So we decided because the, we have quite a few openings of vacancies and upcoming terms coming up, that we're going to put it all together in one package that goes to council. So we needed just a little bit more time to kind of fall in line. That way we can send it to council all at once and fill all of the spots of all the vacancies. So if it goes per plan, the appointment would be January.
Sounds like we need some tutu boats in, just to mix it up. Okay. All right, with that, we will adjourn tonight at 6:42. Thank you.